Good evening, you're listening to WBTN Community Supported Radio. It's time now for a special edition of News and Views, coming to you live today from Cat TV's fabulous Chester J. Hickok Studio, here on Main Street in beautiful downtown Bennington, Vermont. We have assembled for you this evening all seven candidates for Bennington Select Board. By phone, we are joined by Mike Bethel, to my right Peter Brady, Sharon Brush, Thomas Jacobs, to my left John McFadden, Charles Putney, and Eugene Rowley. The format of tonight's candidate forum is pretty straightforward. We have seven questions we're going to ask the candidates, one at a time. Each candidate will have two minutes in which to respond, and when we're done with the questions, each candidate will have two minutes for a closing statement. Mr. Bethel will be the first candidate to answer the first question. Mr. Bethel, are you ready?
I can hear you.
Okay, here we go. Prioritize for us your top three critical infrastructure improvements needed in Bennington, and tell us how you would fund those improvements.
Well, one, you have to remember what Terry Morris, our water and sewer director, said, our pipes are all antiquated and they have to be done, and we have to do it right away. And there's a water pressure problem up on Grandview that has to be done, state mandated, that's going to cost around five million dollars. You have the water and treatment plant that's going to cost about eight million dollars. How the town is going to fund it is beyond me until we start to allow businesses to come in here and help us offset the taxes. Everybody's taxes went up about four hundred dollars last year, and they're going to go up probably another four hundred this year. So I really don't have the answer on how we're going to fund it. I think that should be a question to the existing select board and the town manager. I think we should have been doing things for a long time over the years to prepare the improvements to our community.
All right, would you like to expand on that anymore?
Well, I would like to, again, see somebody start recruiting businesses to Bennington so we can get more tax base, grow the grand list. And there's going to be an awful burden in the next few years of these infrastructure repairs. You've got at least eighteen million dollars that we haven't even started to pay for. Five million for the Irene Storm, like I said, five million for Grandview, and eight million for the water and treatment. We have to start growing our economy in Bennington, and no more excuses. We just have to start recruiting businesses to Bennington, all type of businesses.
And you've got about fifteen seconds left, anything further?
I'll pass on that, that's all I can say at that point, you can move it on now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brady?
I think the top three would have to be first Grandview and Main Street. Main Street's got water pipers from circa eighteen fifty-nine, and you've got the mandated substance on Grandview Street. And then we've got the water treatment plant that needs upgrades. We are talking about four point five million for Grandview, four million dollars for Main Street, about ten million dollars on the water treatment plant. What I would propose is that we get estimates done on these. The original estimate on Grandview was one million. Because of the sagging economy and just a strain on property taxes, it's been put off and put off, and it's now at four point four million. We've got to get these done. I would propose that we take out a bond for all of them, get an estimate done on all of them, on these projects, and it would keep the strain off the property tax, you know, bond over thirty years, bond over forty years, and get these out of the way. A third thing I think we're going to have to take care of is Northside Drive, and there's a debate right now about whether the state is responsible for the cost of that, or whether the town is responsible for the cost of that. At this juncture, what I would suggest, we try to work with our delegation to Montpelier and get, so we can take it over now, the town take it over, and the state be liable for the improvements that need to be done in the long run. But we could start working on it now. Almost.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Brush?
Thank you. I think my top three priorities would be, first of all, the water treatment plant, which is thirty-plus years old, and there are mechanical things that need to be fixed. We've directed town staff to try and make cuts down to eight million dollars, and they are working on that. And I think we've agreed as a board to work on them in phases, so we're not hitting the taxpayer with the whole ball of wax at the same time. The next would be the water system, which does need some upgrades. We've been working on Northside Drive, which is two-thirds complete, and that has been paid for by state funding, and the town is, the town has been responsible for portions of it, but we do have reserve funds that we set aside each year, so it really, it's cost to taxpayers, but not as much as it could have. And the last, it's just things that we're exploring right now, the Armory Jarred site, that we could possibly take over the armory. Trade with the National Guard at this point, we'll trade lands, and they are wanting to build a new armory. And we're studying that as far as funding and what should be, how we're going to approach it. We need to look at the structure and how the, what needs, needs to be repaired there. So I think those are the top three things for me at this point. But we do have reserve funds set aside in the different highway fund, in the water fund, so it doesn't hit the taxpayer quite as heavily as it would normally. And typically, we would bond for something like this and stretch it out over a twenty-year period. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jacobs?
It would be redundant to suggest that, other than those priorities that have just been mentioned, are the priorities, and it would be mine as well to examine, because we have an aging infrastructure, we have an aging population to support the infrastructure. Our grand list is unfortunately becoming so impacted by an aging population and industries that are not coming to Bennington. The difficulty in dealing with these priorities is paramount. It's going to be very difficult, but we've got to examine the options that are available to us. Bonding is certainly going to be one of the areas that's got to be examined as an alternative, but is not, go back to, and we're not talking about what the other candidates suggested, but it is all about the economy and growing our grand list. Unless we do that, we're not going to be able to support our bonding either. So it's going to be critical, that that's a part of our overall discussion. One of the areas that hasn't been mentioned is part of our infrastructure, believe it or not, is that we're still looking for FEMA to step up on the Irene reimbursement. They have, to this point, my knowledge, they have not stepped forward with meeting the federal government's responsibility, and I know the congressional delegation and the local folks are trying to deal with it, but you know, that's over four million dollars that this community is presently at risk, and that has got to be dealt with early on, because that's an obligation that cannot go on, undealt with for an extended period of time. Having that four million dollar exposure would not help our bonding situation if we deal with the sewage treatment plant or the water treatment plant. So those are areas that have to be dealt with, but we've got a number of problems. And this town has got issues, but thankfully, we've got good people that are going to step up to bat.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McFadden.
I think the first thing that comes to mind is safety. We've talked about the pipelines, we've talked about the sewer lines and the water treatment plant, along with the roadworks that needs to be done, and I think that's the first thing that we need to look at, is the safety of everybody in the community. And that one's not going to be an easy one to solve. We need to look at really budgeting our money, allocating the money to the right things, and pulling things off of, in areas that we aren't necessarily needed. The second one, I'm looking at new business development and possibly changing different lands that might be industrial and changing those to commercial. Now, that one's going to be a little easier to bring money into play, because we can use the commercial side of things to bring money towards our town. So that will help get the ball rolling in that aspect. The third thing that I'd really like to look at is the community building aspect of things, and that can be simple. It can be small amounts of money, it can be something as simple as developing bike paths, or bring something to the community that they can really enjoy, not just putting out fires of old roadwork that needs to be done, has to be done, and giving back, showing that we're working for the people in the town. Going back to the first thing, the safety issue, again, I reiterate that it's not going to be easy to get the money to work on these issues, but it has to be done. And when things have to be done, you can find, you tend to be able to find money, whether it be statewide or being able to manage the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Putney.
Well, the question, excuse me, is well framed, because what it is about is setting priorities, and I think that's one of the primary responsibilities of the select board. Certainly, the water treatment plant, and we've known about the water lines for years, the antiquated lines, it's a dilemma that strikes a lot of older towns. I also want to suggest a third, as a third priority, and it's not exactly something the town is directly responsible for, but we have a very old housing stock in Bennington, and as a result of the old housing stock, we have a lot of very inefficient homes where residents, low and moderate income residents, are spending inordinate amounts of money on fuel, oil, and the like. And I think one of the things the town could do is try to look for resources to help homeowners and landlords insulate homes, insulate buildings, so that the cost of running those buildings declines in the cost of heating them. And it's, I'm very interested in energy efficiency, I have been for a long time, and this strikes me, well, it, the President's State of the Union message talked about a real initiative for weatherization, and I think it's something Bennington ought to jump on the moment, anything like that comes up. We can look for other funds, community development funds. I also think that community development funds to help owners of downtown buildings, perhaps with low interest loans, fix those buildings up so that they're second floor housing, rather than trying to set them up for offices. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rowley.
Well, being at the end of the table here, I'm pretty much going to reiterate what everybody else said, as far as the water treatment plant, the sewer and water lines. I think the second thing on my list would probably be roads. I don't, I live off Elm Street, and by far, it's probably one of the worst roads in our town. In the wintertime, we have frost heaves, and the patches are coming out and everything else. So I think roads would be probably the, one of the big things that I want to work on. And I don't know if this is considered infrastructure, but our rec center, it's a component of this town, and I think we could make it much better than it is. You need to create things that young families would want to come to this town for, and I think a recreation facility is one of them. So as far as coming up a way of paying for things, it's definitely building the grand list. We have to understand that we can have a vibrant downtown as well as a vibrant commercial district. We can be selective on what is, what comes to our town, so we don't end up with major conflicts as far as what's being carried downtown and what's being carried in the commercial district. But I think the biggest thing is, is we need to, families, young families, and in order to really work on relieving the tax burdens that the taxpayers currently have in this town.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brady will be the first candidate to answer our second question. What role should the select board play in addressing the increasing social ills in Bennington, such as drug abuse and prostitution?
Well, as we recently saw, there was quite a sweep done by area law enforcement, and it was a combination of state, federal, and town. I think this did a great service to Bennington, but if we think that it's all cleaned up, we're fooling ourselves. One thing I would suggest is that the select board work with our delegation to Montpelier. Last year, Senator Sears proposed a doctor shopping bill. What this did was set up a bank for the pharmaceuticals, the pharmacies, the doctors, so they could see, there are pills that are rampant all over our streets. Percocet, Vicodin. If we think that everything was cleaned up, it wasn't. We have to start monitoring, and I blame a lot of us on the medical industry and the pharmaceutical industry. They've over prescribed these, they're for sale all over town, and what they do is kill people. When they're used, the people get hooked on them. We've seen increase in break-ins and car thefts, you know, breaking into cars. We've seen houses where they go in and cut the pipes out, they're looking for money to buy drugs. So I'd like to see that doctor shopping bill get passed. There was an issue with the legislation where it had, the police chief would in effect be the one who had access to all that information, and it was stymied in the House. I'd like to see, I know Dick Sears reintroduced it this year, and it needs to be the pharmacies and the doctors that have access, and they can pull a doctor in, or the police chief in when they need somebody to, take a look at somebody.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Brush?
I think the select board role is to be supportive and to bring funding to the different entities that need it. I know we did work with Senator Sears last year, and he secured monies for the recent drug raids that we had here in Bennington. And the town, the select board has been very supportive of the police department as far as giving them funding for equipment and things that they may need to be able to enforce the drug problems in Bennington. I think it's a lot bigger than people realize the problem. I think the police department is doing a terrific job at trying to curb as much as they can. It's an ongoing effort with the police department, and I think that we haven't seen the last of it. So the select board can, you know, I think we just need to be supportive and make sure that they have enough funds to do their job properly.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you. You know, Bennington's no different than a lot of other communities in this state, in this region, in this country. We've just been more proactive of recent in trying to at least respond to the imminency of what we see as the drug culture that's, again, not just in Bennington. We're fortunate enough that the existing select board and the police department have been responsive to identifying the issue and trying to be proactive in response to it. Frankly, you know, part of the process too is education, and enforcement is part of education. The word that gets out in the drug community, and that's not just in Bennington, that's the tri-city, metropolitan, New York area, is that Bennington is not a place to cast your net for dispersment of drugs. So I think the select board should continue to keep this at the, in the front, on the front burner. Hopefully, the next part of the enforcement, basically, playing out through the judicial system, will further emphasize that Bennington is proactive, and we will not be known other than as a center for dealing with issues of social ills. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McFadden?
I went to school here and grew up here not too long ago, and this problem is more recent than I think we're all aware of, and it's something that I never could even consider seeing as a teen here in Bennington. And to sit here and say that the select board is going to be able to stop the war on drugs anywhere would be a lie, and I don't think it's something that we can really do. But what we can do is take our responsibilities a little more seriously and talk to the different people that can help out, and that would be working with people that are trying to work to fight and stop this problem that we have, and that would be at the police department possibly. And we're going to see what they need, the issues that they face and the problems that they see, and the roadblocks that they end up coming up against, and really working with those people and going outside the realm of what our responsibilities tend to be, being on the select board, and really help put our budget towards those issues, and I think that would help immensely. On top of that, what we also will see is that people don't want to be drug dealers, people don't want to be, have their profession be a professional drug dealer. They go to it as a means of a last resort, and to me, that means that your community is failing, you have people out there that are really struggling, and we need to try and build on that. We need to try and give them other options and bring new, different jobs to them, and hopefully, they can grab onto that and work through the issues that they currently have. And that would help drive this, I guess, dirty game away from our town a little more.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Putney?
I applaud the work of the task force on substance abuse and carrying out that raid, but it's interesting, that was sixty people out of fifteen thousand in our community. At the same time, you know, at the same time, just about every morning in the banner, their announcements, news articles on three or four people have been picked up for driving while intoxicated, which is just as dangerous for our society, just as dangerous for, alcohol addiction is just as bad as drug addiction, it's just not an illegal drug. And so, part of what I think the select board job is to continue to support the police in its role. Enforcement is a really good idea, but I would say enforcement of drug laws, addiction laws, and I think working with, supporting social service agencies, not with financial aid, but making sure that there are links that promote use of things like the Turning Point Club, which is on Main Street, which helps people in recovery from alcohol addiction, that, you know, United Counseling Service plays a critical role. I've spent a lot of my career as a grant proposal writer, and have written many, many, many grants where communities work on substance abuse issues, both alcohol and drugs, and a major component of making things change is changing the culture of the community. Bennington has had a major change in the past thirty years in its tolerance of alcohol, public alcohol, of drunkenness and the like, and that's really positive, and we need to continue to try and create a positive environment.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rowley.
Yeah, I guess, looking at this as retired law enforcement, the police department would look for the support of the select board, but at the same token, doesn't want to be micromanaged by the select board. I think the select board should find the means to support programs in the police department as far as to deal with substance abuse and prostitution on our streets. I think it also is more access to treatment programs in town. UCS does a great job, but they're only one agency, and from working with them, they're busy, and they do a great job. I think what we need to seriously look at is youth center, mentoring programs. I currently do mentoring, and the best way to stop substance abuse is to catch it before it starts. And I think that the responsibility for the select board would be to work on finding funding, whether through grants or through the legislature, through our representatives, to get us the money to get serious about helping our youth in this town.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bethel?
Yeah, I agree with what was said there. We had an opportunity years ago, build a women's girls club, and we didn't do it. And I, that was a big mistake for our community. We started out, I think it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars paid, and kind of a far, and I think select board had a bigger part in that. Are you getting any echo when I'm talking?
No, you sound fine.
Okay, I'm getting that one, want to screw up for you guys. I think we're like no other community throughout Vermont, perhaps the United States. Drugs are a rotten thing that the youth are doing and other people are doing. How you eradicate it is beyond me, but I think the police department is keeping vigilant. Select board has to bring money into the town so that we have a strong police department. And, but I do believe Gene Rowley and others work on trying to bring some kind of a youth center to this community, and quite honestly, we should have done that, and we still should do it. But it goes back to revenue. This community is going to go broke through years if we don't let it grow. And drugs, like Mr. McFadden said, nobody wants a drug dealer, you have to offer the youth something else. They have to provide financially, and we need to have jobs here of all kinds, commercial, industrial, and I think we need to concentrate on recruiting. We have enough age staff at the town hall, that some of them, we concentrate now on recruiting business and anything, and I wish that the select board would do that. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Brush will be the first candidate to answer our next question. If you had to choose to use town funds to develop the full potential of either Main Street or Northside Drive, which would you choose and why?
Can I choose both? Well, I think Main Street is very important to any town, I, but I seriously would try and funnel money to both. I think Northside Drive is a very important component to the town also, because that's where a lot of our, a lot of our retail outlets or retail stores are. So, you know, it's always nice to have a nice downtown, and I think the BBC is doing a great job at bringing that back. They've, you know, they've rehabbed a few properties in the recent past, if I can just find my note here. They have, we've gained twenty-four businesses in downtown with eighty-nine new jobs in the past three years, so I think our downtown is well on its way to becoming what we would like it to become. And I think Northside Drive, just, you know, we could, we could do a little bit of improvement down there. A little beautification would go nicely with the streetscape down there. So I would, I would funnel the funds to both entities.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you. Frankly, Bennington is one community, and we're not a Northside Drive, we're not a downtown. The historic downtown Bennington has certainly been a catchphrase, but if we were to prioritize one versus the other, we're going to cut off something that is critical to either or both, and end up with nothing. So frankly, it's a question, it's pretty loaded, and that the essence of this-
So, frankly, it's a question, it's pretty loaded, and that the essence of this is, we've got to maintain the historical integrity of downtown Bennington, but recognizing that a lot of the economic development is going to occur on the outskirts, including North Side Drive.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McFadden?
I agree that that's a loaded question, and when you look at the two different entities, you have to think of Bennington primarily as a business at this point, and one that seems to be failing. I understand that we brought in new businesses and we seem to be flourishing, but when you look at the issues that we've had around town, it doesn't appear to be the case. So I guess where I would direct the money to first is North Side Drive, and I'd try to bring in new businesses that way, which would promote new jobs, it would build a community that people would want to live in, but at the same time, we have the responsibility and the ability to just decide what our downtown area is going to be and allow the type of growth that we actually want on Main Street. So, even if we're not pumping money into it, into developing it, it's not ignored at all. What we're trying to do is develop new business, new income for our town, so then maybe a year or two, we can start to really pump money into our downtown area and give us a full community, something that we actually want to see. I mean, Bennington's pretty spread out, and we need to look at defining ourselves and defining the different areas of town. I think I said this once before, but I've had people come into town and they're unsure what the Main Street area is, where Bennington actually resides, is it the Walmart area, is it downtown Bennington? They're really left stumped. So I think if we develop North Side Drive and bring in new businesses that can develop our community, then we can focus in on Main Street, but at the same time, we can leave Main Street with its historic heritage and develop that in the near future.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Putney?
Loaded it indeed. I think Bennington's, Bennington's image is reflected in its village centers, and there are three villages. I mean, one is no longer an independent village, the Village of Bennington, but there's North Bennington Village and there's Old Bennington Village. And I think the character that attracts people to Bennington is inherent in those three villages. It's the life that goes on, it's the older buildings, it's the appeal, so that, that's part of where Bennington has to invest its resources. It's part, we have a national reputation based on our name for people who have never been here, and that's what's going to bring them off of Route 279. It's going to be, because there is some sense of history there, some sense of Vermont Village, even though we're one of Vermont's largest towns. At the same time, North Side Drive is a challenge. It's a challenge because it's a, it's a traffic jam, it's an extremely busy highway, the three lanes is sometimes a little daunting to maneuver around, and that means putting pressure on the state to take care of what they should be taking care of on North Side Drive. So I think part of it is how Bennington uses its own resources, and there is a special taxing district for downtown, and that's a good investment, I think. At the same time, that because Route 67A is a state highway as of now, it's the state's responsibility to do what it can, as they did with Route 7 in South Burlington. They made it a very attractive road, and it's, I think it's about time they did that in Bennington.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rowley?
Yeah, it's very hard to choose between Main Street and North Side Drive, but the, Main Street has the BBC to help them and kind of keep an eye on them. So if we had to choose between Main Street and North Side Drive, I'd probably go with North Side Drive. I think that's probably our best chance in improving this town. As I had said before, we can have a healthy downtown and we can have a healthy commercial district, but we can look at ways of bringing in businesses that wouldn't be in competition with the stores in the downtown area. Our movie theater is up for sale. Why doesn't, why don't we investigate bringing in a real movie theater, bring in a multiplex? It would not be competing with anybody downtown, and it would be a draw from the namoring communities to, because right now, if you want to go to a large-scale movie theater, you either have to go to Albany or you have to go to the Berkshire Mall. So I think, looking at that and looking at bringing in other businesses, it's going to come back up again, even though it keeps getting set aside by the Select Board, is Johnson Controls. I think the Select Board needs to make a decision, not wait for somebody to bring them a plan. The Select Board needs to decide, yes, we are going to go ahead, let it go commercial slash industrial, and we will still have the controls as far as what businesses come in. That's why we have a DRB.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bethel?
Well, Gene Rowley, think of my, one of my votes, hey, because I've been talking about that for years now. So North Side Drive, Bennington's moneymaker, and don't let anybody do it. North Side Drive's help us, we allow it to develop, pay for the eighteen million dollar protection fees that we have over the next few years. Walmart cloud, which one of our incumbents didn't want the expansion over there, which the people got to vote on, and it went very much people's way. Right now, eight, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars taxes a year, I believe, and when the expansion is done, there'll be another hundred and fifty thousand added to the tax roll, and there'll be another seventy-five jobs created. Now, they may not be the fanciest jobs and everything, but they're jobs. Gene Rowley is right about North Side Drive. I've gotten to know the owner of North Side Drive and his family over the last couple of years, and they do want to bring something, anything. They cannot do it, people don't even look at it, only are right. And that thing has taken twenty years, that piece of property. Mr. McFadden was probably four years old, last time that was due. So it's time to wake up people on our board that are going to push growth in Bennington. Downtown, they have the BBC. If I sit on the board, I will encourage the board to not give them the seventy thousand dollar a year they get. They have to start controlling, what is the agenda, the BBC? They are not recruiting what we need for downtown. Would they need to concentrate on recruiting? Do they need to hire for downtown? They have the ability to do that, they just don't do it. So I do believe that it's time to prioritize on North Side Drive, and we'll all be financially better off in this community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brady?
I don't think of it as a loaded question, I think of it as a mentality that has existed around here for a long time, a Main Street against North Side Drive mentality, and we have to build it all together. There's no way you're going to do one and not the other and be successful. We could have a thriving downtown with specialty shops, theaters, galleries, and I have a proposal with, when we look into the Armory, if we can get it up to code, put the youth center in there and give the kids something to do in this town. There's a bowling alley downstairs in there, there's a full basketball court, we could have youth leagues in there. And then getting back to North Side Drive, it's a no-brainer for me. Johnson Controls has sat vacant for twenty years. We need to change that to commercial, give it either designation, commercial or industrial, and let it be developed. We get seven thousand dollars a year for that property right now. Developed, it could be from two hundred thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand coming in on that brand list. To sit there and not do anything with it is unacceptable. With the international trade agreements that this country is signing, you can hold that property for next fifty years, and it's going to sit there vacant. So let's give the town and developers the options to do something with it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jacobs will be the first candidate to answer the next question. Are tax abatements a legitimate tool to attract new business to Bennington? If so, what guidelines would you use when determining whether or not to offer tax abatements to a business?
Softball question. Easy one. The essence of tax abatement or tax stabilization is, I think, a great tool to have in that box. The essence of the program is that to invite new businesses to make investment in the town in the form of employees and capital investment, they get their real estate tax grand list set for a certain number of years, and that, frankly, I think that's a great arrangement so long as they are able to demonstrate a commitment to this community that at the end of the three-year term, that you might enter into the contract with them, they'll continue to meet the responsibilities of a good citizen to the community. I think it is a way to attract businesses from other communities that might not have the same tax arrangement. I know it's worked in this town before. I've seen companies come over from Cambridge area and relocate their corporate headquarters here and get tax stabilization relief. I think that is a, is a great tool, not to be used willy-nilly, but as a, as a way to enhance the economic development of this community, I think it's a great tool.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McFadden?
I have to agree that I think it's a great tactic to try and draw in new businesses, but I think the issue that needs to be addressed goes further than that. I think what we need to do is make sure that the businesses that we currently have in town are happy with what we're doing, are happy with the going-ons of our town, and it can go even further than that. We need to talk about why they came to Bennington, why they're staying in Bennington, and if they're doing their job correctly, they're talking to their employees and wondering what keeps them in Bennington, why do they want to live here, why do they commute from Troy? And so I think there's a broad conversation that needs to be fine-tuned with the businesses that we currently have, and giving these different incentives to new businesses that want to come to Bennington could be the answer. I'm not saying that it's not, but it can go much further than that, and we can do more for our local businesses and our larger industrial businesses that we currently have that could pay dividends in the end, and I think that's how, the direction that we need to go. We need to start a conversation with the businesses that we have, and if, if tax incentives is the best way to bring in new business, then great, but in addition to that, we also need to have representatives out there pushing Bennington, promoting Bennington, not just waving a flag that says, here's some money for you. So I think there's a lot to be done, other than just tax incentives.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Putney?
I think that, in real estate, they have a term for looking at people who are buying properties, and that's called qualifying them, making sure that they're eligible, that they're appropriate, that they have a long-term commitment, and I think a long-term commitment is the issue. When I think about tax abatement, tax incentives, I think about CB Sports, which would move to wherever the latest tax abatement was available to it. So it had a selling shop here, and then I think it moved to Glenn's Falls, and then it moved around based on whoever was giving them the best deal at any moment. That doesn't develop long-term jobs. We had a resident in Bennington whose first name was Fred, and I've forgotten, he lived out on Pippin Knoll. He was from the University of California, and he spent years studying tax abatements, and he, what I would really want to do is, I'd want to do the research. I would want to find out whether it in fact is a, is a good tool, whether there are other tools that can be more successful in bringing in businesses and keeping them here and helping them grow. And I would agree with Mr. McFadden, if I'm allowed, that I think making sure the businesses that are already here are doing well and continuing to do well is almost more important than dangling money in front of outside businesses.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rowley?
I'm just going to say, I'm retired correction officer, so I don't know a whole bunch about tax abatements or anything like that. Hopefully, there would be other members of the Select Board that would be very familiar with that stuff. I guess, the only things I will say is that when we're looking at businesses or we're shopping for businesses to come to Bennington, that we want them to be a good fit and be a good fit with our community. Good-paying jobs and clean industry. Also that, they're also a good fit with our businesses that we currently have downtown. I think also, we'll be getting the BBC as well as the Chamber of Commerce involved when it comes to looking for businesses or industry to come into Bennington, because they're, they're our salespeople for the town of Bennington, the BBC and the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bethel?
I'd answer directly, no, I'm not really for them. When you give an abatement to one company, you're asking other companies that are here that pay taxes for years to subsidize that abatement. I'll use an example, we gave the golf course a tax stabilization package a few years ago when the new owners went and bought it, and this year here, what I understand, they're delinquent on their taxes, so no, I'm not really for them. I think if you have a strong community, people that want to move here, because you have a strong community that your tax base is reasonable, you rent Richard Ross or Pete Matt and Dunn, and the community has a good spirit and a good name for itself. Dragging one company, Cambridge, New York, over here, what did we gain? We gave them a tax stabilization package, if that's what really happened, and what did we gain? Jobs that we couldn't have driven to Cambridge? You know, we haven't gained anything by them, and very unfair to have the businesses that are here subsidize them. I'd like to go back and talk about our economy. If we have a strong brand lift, we may be able to say, offer something like that, but right now, we can't afford that, and I think we need to prioritize where we put the energy of this town's staff in Select Board, and that is recruiting new business to want to come here, because we've got a good spirit in Bennington, and we're not stupid about giving away our money. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brady?
I think tax stabilization has to be a tool in that box. We have to have a, a set of tools that we can work with, with companies. You can attract businesses to the town. The two things I would link it to are the number of jobs it creates and the wages that they pay. We don't want to bring somebody in that's just going to hire a bunch of temps, no benefits, you know, we want to have quality jobs in the town. If an, we can, if they have to build in this town, in exchange, we give them that stabilization over a couple of years so they can get their feet off the ground. One of the, the opportunities we just missed was WCW that started here in Bennington, building the natural form mattress. They, they were picked up by hospitals in over twenty-six countries. They were, they're featured, that mattress is featured in Hilton Garden Inns worldwide, and they moved out of Bennington into Housick Falls. It's over a hundred jobs now, a hundred people they employ, and under the brunt of New York state taxes and property taxes and overvaluation of their properties, they decided it was time to come back to Vermont. They started in Bennington, we missed out on it, Manchester got it. That's why I think we have to set some benchmarks and some goals for the BBC and the Economic Director. I don't know what they're doing right now, but they need to start programs to recruit. And Manchester lucked out that, I mean, they, they invested a lot of money in Manchester. They bought the Appleman property up there, and I think it's just an opportunity we missed, and the stabilization has to be in that toolbox to use.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Brush?
I think tax stabilization is, is a good thing. I know we've used it in the past, but I think it has to start at the state level also, because the state is capable of giving more tax breaks than the town of Bennington is. So you have to partner with the state in, in bringing those to fruition. We have done it in the past with some startup businesses up on Shields Drive, and we've also forgiven machinery and equipment taxes for the likes of Energizer and some other industries in town who used to pay tax on, on all other machinery and equipment. So I think it's a good thing, I think it's a tool that we can use, and, you know, we'd have to... And, you know, we'd have to still partner with the state and, you know, look at it from an economic standpoint before we give away the store, so to speak.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McFadden will answer the next question first. What role should the Select Board play in improving the quality of education provided by the Southwest Vermont Supervisory Union's Bennington Schools?
I think, again, we've talked about different ways that the Select Board can help the different entities that we have in town and the different groups that we've developed. Again, I think an open line of communication needs to be invoked. We need to make sure that the people on the Select Board are going around to these different organizations that are trying to help out Bennington, the town of Bennington, whether it be Education or whether it be the Better Bennington Corporation. And we need to kind of tie everything together. When we have such an open line of communication available, whether it be through email or online, any online access, we need to open that line of communication. So I'd say we work with the Select Board, or the Select Board works with the School Board in trying to develop new programs and bring kids into different things that weren't always available. I know when I was in school at Mount Anthony, all the programs that are now available weren't available to me. So they've already started to make leaps and bounds in that direction, and I think there's more that can be done. So I think opening up that line of communication with the School Board and looking at other communities around the country and statewide and trying to look at the initiatives that they've put forth. And let's draw for something that we know works and that sometimes is studying other communities and other towns.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Putney?
The issue of the schools is a challenging one because overall, I think we have some very good schools. And when I look at the accomplishments of the students who leave Mount Anthony, where they go to college, what they do when they get to college, what they achieve, it's really outstanding. As Mr. McFadden said, there are some really good alternative programs at the high school. But, you know, I think what we have to get down to is the issue that two of the elementary schools in Bennington have poverty rates of 70, 75 percent. And what happens is schools that are trying to teach children who are living in fragmented houses, homes without enough parental support because the parents have to work all the time, a lot of these folks living in poverty are working poor, who are just doing everything they can to make ends meet. So what we have to do is we have to ask ourselves, how can the town act to ameliorate some of the impacts of poverty in our community? What can we do to, and I think a teen center is one opportunity, I think making sure that we have partners who are working on children's programming. I think the REC Center could do some remarkable expansion of youth-centered programs that provide a bridge when parents are living in poverty. But I think, you know, this is where the economic development comes in. We climb ourselves out of poverty when we have jobs that allow people to earn a living wage, and a living wage is not the lowest retail rate.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rowley?
Well, first off, in the three, I sat on the Bennington School Board, and in the three years I sat on that board, I did not see a single Select Board member attend a single meeting. The boards all seem to feel that they're operating in a bubble, that they are, there's no way for them to work together, and I really don't understand it. One of the things when I was on the School Board was working on finding a way to build a new school. Our elementary schools in Bennington are ill-equipped to educate in the 21st century. When I was on the Facilities Committee, we toured schools, relatively new schools, and we saw what we could do and what we could have. But one of the things whenever it was brought up at a board meeting was, where are we going to put it? I think that's someplace where the Select Board can be involved with, at least the Bennington School Board, to work on finding land in order to put a new school, either in the town or work with the Mount Anthony Board as far as putting a new school up by the middle school and create an educational campus. I was like crazed when I read in the banner that they're thinking about putting another $5.3 or $6.2 million into Benell. It's getting to the point where they're saying, "Well, we're never going to be able to float a bond issue for $30 million, but at the rate we're going, we're going to spend $30 million on our antiquated schools." So I think that's someplace the Select Board and the School Boards really need to talk as far as how to better our school system itself.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bethel?
Well, before I get out of an answer, my compliment to you, but this thing's going very well until all your candidates, they have to be looking pretty good on what TV?
There you go.
You know, I could look at the draw looking pretty good. But the, Gene really, I started, I don't remember exactly when Gene was on the DFD, because of lack of communication from the Select Board over the years, the School Board has kind of left out in the cold. I know I, we almost won it on that vote for this big screen closing down Catamount. I didn't want Catamount closed. We gave up a system that needed repair, but was worth millions, millions of dollars, 20, 30 millions of dollars to replace it, and we gave it away, 150,000 to Appleman, not to Jackson, who bought it, it was a great buy. But we do this to ourselves over and over and over again, we gotta stop doing it. I think if I get on the board with others that are there tonight, you're going to have a great dialogue with the School Board because the School Board isn't their job to raise revenue now, okay? It's the Select Board's job to do that. And that's where after communicating with each other, they have to. And tell your people that are running that TV, your picture just went off TV after I complimented you.
Okay.
You're not lying, or somebody didn't like that. You ought to fix that, talk to Dan, wait a minute. But I don't know how much time I got left, but there has to be a lot of better communication between the Select Board and the School Board. Education is extremely important in our community, and we're all in it together.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brady?
Raising revenue is the important part. If we're going to get anything done in education, we have to have the funds available. Growing the grand list again, developing, bringing jobs in. Another important aspect is the Career Center, the Tutorial Center, where the town does put in some money. I'd like to see them help us get workforces more ready, you know, to have some classes in, say, like carbon fiber, where we're bringing a lot of carbon fiber jobs in. I see they are beginning to offer those. But they could offer machinery for the jobs we do have here, like Energizer and other places, to, there are many of the machines now are computerized, they need people that can work these computer systems, reading blueprints, both hydraulic and pneumatic. And we could help get people business-ready. With the poverty rate at 77 percent, we are going to need to bring in more jobs. And one of my proposals that I put forth, right now, we are selling Morgan Springs water to Poland Spring for seven cents on the gallon. And if you take, like, stop by Cumberland Farms, it goes for $3.69 a gallon. You get into the quartz and the pints and, you know, they're six or $7 a gallon they're getting for that resource that we have here in Bennington to get some money on the grand list. I'm proposing that we get out of that contract and build a bottling plant here in Bennington, hire people locally at a livable wage, and market that nationally as Bennington Springs or Morgan Springs. Create jobs here, bring in money to the grand list. And lastly, just open communication. I think you made a good point with that, that the Select Board and the School Boards need to be talking. The 19 percent-
I'll have to stop you right there. Thank you. Ms. Bruch?
You know, I've thought about this for a long time, and I'm not sure it's actually the Select Board's responsibility to improve the quality of education. I think it's the town's responsibility to improve the quality of education, and I know the Select Board is part of the town. You know, we set up programs, we have after-school programs that the children participate in, but they, you know, I mean, the School Board has their own budgets, we have our budgets, and the same can be said for the School Board. They don't attend Select Board meetings either. So, you know, I think there may be a chance to open a dialogue between the two. But they have their own funding, they have their own boards, and, you know, I'm not sure what the town can go in and do to improve the education. They, you know, they're kind of two separate entities, and we can't be responsible for everything in town. So, you know, people may not like to hear that, but I just, I think the school needs to take responsibility for themselves.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you. You know, actually, the town and schools are in partnership. At least, we all get our tax bill in one envelope. And it seems like two-thirds of it is for the school, and the other portion is for the town and the board that we're going to be, some of us sitting on. But I can tell you that it is a partnership. The town does have the responsibility for developing the grand list, as we talked about this evening. But if we're going to attract the businesses that we all say we want and need, then we've got to have a strong educational system. And I think right now, there is a question whether or not individuals will relocate back to Bennington or new companies coming to Bennington unless they are comfortable that we have a strong educational system with a strong educational infrastructure. Right now, that is a challenge. Just like a couple of weeks ago where there was a discussion relative to the arts and the economy, I think education has got to be right up there at the top of that pinnacle. It's maybe time for a summit involving the town and the educators to come together and have a master plan developed so that this community is known as an educational force, and then the grand list may find itself following it. Thanks, Bob.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Putney will answer our next question first. Will the Bennington bypass have an overall positive or negative impact on the town as a whole, and should the southern leg be completed?
Already, I've seen some very positive impacts. Trying to get across Route 9 in Gypsy Lane, trying to get onto the road on a Friday night, it's now possible. Twenty years ago, I remember sitting in an upstairs office on Main Street, and a tractor-trailer was going by about every 35 seconds and fouling the air and making a lot of noise and just making downtown miserable. I think that in a lot of respects, our quality of life in downtown on the roadways is better for having the bypass. The reality is, it's here, it's a different business environment, it's a different, it has an impact on downtown. But, you know, a lot of the impact on downtown was already there as a result of the shopping centers built away from downtown. Bennington, downtown Bennington is not what it was 30 years ago and never will be. It's a different kind of environment, and so we have to make the best of that. I guess in the heart of my inclination about the southern leg is, overall, I'm inclined to support it, but what I'd like to see are traffic studies. Jim Sullivan from the Regional Commission tells me this traffic study suggested it's a lot of traffic that comes through Bennington and is not stopping here, that it's just a way of getting from here to there. When I look at where traffic backs up to, sometimes on South Street, it's up to Friendly's or beyond, and it takes a long time to get through the lights. So we have to look at all the elements. I'm really a planner, and I take a long-term view.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rowley?
I guess what it comes down to is, we all have busy lives, especially people that, and I'm not sending this to tourists or stuff, but it's great that you can go from one side of town to the other side of the town and not see a stoplight or a traffic light, that you can just head straight across. A lot of people want to blame the bypass on business, the economy, everything else, what's happening to downtown. It's up to downtown to be strong enough to survive on its own, where you can't, don't try to use a road to blame what's going on. The fact is, I really feel the southern leg should be completed. When I ran for Select Board many, many years ago, one of the things that was a hot-ticket item was having the, what do you call them, outlet stores, that a bunch of them opened up in Manchester ultimately, but they were looking at the Mill Building about putting outlet stores there. And one of the comments that I was given by a seated Select Board member was, "It would bring traffic." The problem is, the way it is now is, yeah, we have traffic, but it's traffic going through town to go elsewhere. The town of Bennington needs to have an identity, and right now, we have a number of them, but we need to, are we going to be a museum town? Are we going to be a foodie town? What are we going to do? But definitely, I think the southern leg should be completed.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bethel?
Well, I disagree with Gene on that one. I don't think the southern leg is needed. The studies that Putney was related to, that I read, showed that 30 percent of the business traffic was right around a truck trap. It does come up here, most services to downtown anyway, so no, I'm not for the southern leg. And that should be put to work. If I vote to the people of Bennington, which the Select Board could do any given election, I asked them to do an advisory vote on joint control. They turned that down, which I just hope they let me quit to, just the advisory votes to find out these key questions for the people to weigh in on. The other, the regular bypass that we got, east-west connection going north, stop whining. It's here, we whined about it for 30 years, we didn't have it, now we're whining about it, we live with it. We're going to make the best of it. I don't think it's going to be a negative. If you have attractions that people want to eat and use in Bennington, if we have a vibrant town, not just empty stores with little decorations, but real stores, you have the Northside Drive that people want to come to on a weekly basis to shop, people will get off the highway to Bennington. So no, I wouldn't put the southern leg into the other bypass part of it. I think we can live with it and work out on it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brady?
I think we have to have the third leg of it over. If you look at the long run of things, and I remember back in the days when we had traffic plugged up with 18-wheelers down on Main Street, the fumes were terrible, the noise was terrible, it was hard to get around downtown. But it's going to come down to, we need to have attraction to the town. We do need to work on the identity, and I think some of the businesses we've seen lately would help with that, with TJ's Fish Fry, the Nest at Phoenix House of Design, Old Castle Theater. We keep building things like that down Main Street, and we bring in the Armory into this as a community center, have Friday night dances there, you know, you have a place for the kids to go. And people will show up, and nothing would help that more, to attract people into town, to use all our restaurants and gas stations and everything would be a thriving retail sector on Northside Drive. The banner did a few weeks ago on their website a question, "What do you go out of town to buy that you don't buy here in Bennington?" And the answer was, there are about 150-something answers, everything. People are leaving this town to go shopping for the day. We could attract others here, you know- for the day. We could attract others here, you know, and we're going to need the bypass to, to keep the truck traffic out of the way. We have to take a long-term view. We have been piecemealing everything for a long time, and it has got to change. We've got to have a long-term plan.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Brush?
Um, I think the bypass has been actually good. We do need to complete the third leg, just so it has a continuity to, to move around Bennington. But I have the privilege of having my office right on the four corners in Bennington, so I see lots of traffic and trucks and whatever happens to go through the four corners. And last summer, there were thousands of cars, and you could walk up and down Main Street, and half of the, three-quarters of the licensed plates were out of state. And, I mean, and from far away. They were from California, they were from Alaska, they were from, you know, the other side of the country. And people do stop here, and I think once they get the Welcome Center open, we'll see more tourism, especially if we have special things, like we had the Moose Fest that drew thousands of people to Bennington, and this year, we're going to have the Catamount Prowl. So, I think the bypass has not been detrimental. It's gotten rid of some of the truck traffic, but the truck traffic I see coming now is the one, the ones that are heading south. So, I think we need to complete the bypass, and then the southern traffic that's going south will stay out of the four corners, and hopefully, we'll just see lots of cars and tourists coming downtown. It'll increase.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you. Frankly, I agree. It is what it is. We have the bypass. Many of us have waited almost our entire lifetime for first, and now the second leg. We could probably wait another half a generation for the third leg, so I don't think it's really important to spend a lot of time on that. The essence of it is, 279 does go around Bennington, but Bennington does not have to be bypassed by 279, if we do and play our cards right. And I think there's all kinds of opportunities. The Welcome Center, I think, is going to be a real attribute to getting folks to realize that there are some real benefits to stopping and spending some time and money in this community. Also, the, the fact that the lack of trucks on Main Street, a few times that I've, I've sat out at the various restaurants outside with those trucks, you might as well be sitting in, in the wash machine, because the essence of it is, you can't hear yourself think, much less the person you're communicating with. Already, I think this gives the opportunity for some of the downtown restaurants to have more cafe-type style menus, where folks can enjoy the outside during the seasons when, than we, when we do have them. So, all in all, I think the bypass, 279, no longer known as the bypass, will be advantageous to Bennington.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Rowley will be the first candidate.
Can I?
Oh, I'm sorry. I put, I put the check mark here.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's all right. Um, so, what I think is, I think that the bypass can be a good thing, and when first developed, it, it brought about some good points. It would remove the traffic, the truck traffic from our Main Street area and our downtown area, which, again, is a good thing. But what wasn't anticipated is the other traffic that is also lost. And if it was anticipated, nothing was done about fixing that problem. And so, again, I have to refer back to building up a community. Unfortunately, Bennington has lost its appeal. I've been across the state. I, I went to school in Burlington, Vermont, and when I tell people where I'm from, they have no idea where Bennington is. They, they ask me, wait, Brattleboro? And so, Bennington has lost its appeal. The name that it used to be here just isn't here anymore. So, again, I think we need to refer back to building up a community, which can start by new business development, and, and pushing a place that people want to live, and a name that people will remember. And that, that's what Bennington needs to become. But the second thing that was sold was, was the fact that we're going to bring in new industries and new businesses, and the new bypass was supposed to allow us to do that. Frankly, I haven't, I haven't seen it. Whether it be the, the job of the Select Board, we've already kind of gone, gone through that question, but I, again, think that an open line of communication with the current businesses would help us know what we're selling, what Bennington actually is giving to those current industries. And I think an effort needs to put, be put into that, to make the bypass worth it, to make people feel that the bypass was actually a good thing and can be a good thing, which it can be. But as, as of right now, what we're using it for is, is proving that we, we failed our people when putting the bypass in. So, I think some changes need to be made.
Okay. Thank you. Now, I'm back. Moving on. Mr. Rowley will be the first candidate to answer our last question. Describe the average Benningtonian.
Well, um, that's a hard question. Uh, [laughs] that's a tough one. Uh, I, I guess it would be a friendly person, somebody that works hard. Um, I guess, I guess, too, it's, it's also somebody that is concerned, concerned about their futures, concerned about their children, what kind of education they're going to have. Um, I guess it's, for some, it's their concerns about how they're going to put food on the table. Don't want to paint doom and gloom, but from working with at-risk youth, and working with families, and volunteering as a guardian ad litem in the courts, you kind of do see the darker side of our community. But in general, I see it's a town, and it's a people that want to make Bennington the best town that it can be.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Bethel?
Well, I think Mr. Rowley handled that question very well. I want to tell you, I'm surprised that, oh, that's a tough question to see Ebert, he handled it very well. But, uh, I guess, I, I would reiterate everything Gene, Gene said, and there are good people in this community, but they do wonder why Pennington is the way it is. All the bells and whistles we have, why aren't we better off? And that's one of the reasons I'm running, and I'm sure of some of the other new people that are running for the, are running, too. We've had opportunities over the years that we've wandered. I don't know why we have, but the people that I hang around with, by social economic level, I go out to Ugg's when I want to have some fun, and other people go off to the country club. And there's a vast, vast desert between the two cultures. And I do believe that Bennington can, can quite honestly have it all. You can have your country club proud, and have your Ugg's proud, but the key, key thing is, is resources of taxes that are available to make our schools strong, make our communities strong, and stop having these ad hoc groups kind of suck the air out of Pennington, and say they're going to study for a year, and they come back and they're empty. We've got to get Select Board, the new Select Board, to do things that they're supposed to be doing, and handle the tough situations, tough decisions, and don't be afraid to go to the people. Go to the people and ask them these things, and the advisory votes or whatever. It's, it's, it's a community, and we all want the same things. If we work together to get, I think everybody can have a little piece of the vibe. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Brady?
Um, Benningtonians, independent, able, and bold. Concerned is correct. We have a median income in this town now, thirty thousand dollars. Unemployment hovers around six, seven percent. They're also confused why, why we're not doing anything about it. But I'll tell you, from going around this town and talking to people, the, the volunteerism, you know, people are willing to help out. I'm proposing a Bennington Corpse. It'll be a completely volunteer organization. People want to get in and help. We're doing a town beautification program. We're going to propose working on some parks and other things. But they, if you ask them to help, they're willing to help. They're, they're, they have a lot of pride in this town, of what it once was, and they want to see it back to what it once was. And they're willing to roll up their sleeves and help. And it, it's a great people we have in this town.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Brush?
Um, I think the average Benningtonian doesn't necessarily have to be someone that was born and raised here in Bennington. I know there's probably a few people here that were. I was not, but I've lived here for probably thirty-five years, and I consider Bennington my home. I raised my children here. But I think they're, you know, they're hardworking. They take an interest in the community and in their neighbors. They're always willing to help. They volunteer for numerous things. So, I think that it's just, you know, someone, just all of us, we're all Benningtonians. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you. The, I see the average Benningtonian as really being a composite of a lot of people, not just one person that may have lived here, been born here and lived here all of their life, and traced their ancestry back to the cemetery in Old Bennington. I also see folks that have just moved here and, and came to live in this town because they see a future for themselves and their family in this community. I see these people, the average Benningtonian as being, as the other members have talked about, committed to the future of this community, for themselves, for the community, and, and for the, for the state. So, I think Bennington is, we have the benefit of a, a changing composite, and we should take advantage of that, because each of the, the people that live in this town have a real strength that we should all tap into. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. McFadden?
Uh, I think that to depict an average Benningtonian is, is unfair, and really tough to do, because we are so diverse. We're really, we're, we're just like the rest of the country. I mean, the spectrum that we lie on is, is, is so, so different from everybody else. And you could talk to one person on the street, and you'll get completely different answers from the next person you talk to. And the differences kind of make up what Bennington is. And I think what, what was said before, that we're all here, we all want a better life, we all want a better standard of living, and sometimes we just don't know how to do it. So, we are concerned, we are happy, and we're looking for help. We're looking for the people that we elect into certain positions to help us along, and to do what they believe is the right thing, to give them that sense of community, that better standard of living, and hopefully, financial gains as well. So, to depict what a, an average Benningtonian is, is, is too hard to do. But I think that, in essence, we all want to live here. We all are here for a reason, and hopefully, we don't want to leave. But if we want to leave, hopefully, hopefully, we can make the reasons known, and the people that we elect into certain positions can help change that opinion.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Putney?
I think the average Benningtonian is a Reagan conservative who votes for Bernie Sanders. What I mean is, I, I think that Bennington people are pragmatic. They look at you straight in the face. I don't think they are doctrinaire, or, you know, toe the party line. I think they think for themselves when it comes to issues. And what I've heard is people with really good questions. And what I've heard on this panel is a lot of really thoughtful investigations into this town. I think the, the average Benningtonian, although not all, are people who choose to live here, who, who could have lived somewhere else, who had choices, whether they were native or not. And Mr. McFadden moved back to Bennington. He was a native. Others of us chose Bennington at some point in our lives to be here. The average Benningtonian is working class. They are, but they're working class. They are people who are proud of their job, proud of what they do, proud of what they do in their leisure time, proud of being volunteer firefighters, proud of volunteering at the, at the free clinic. But there are also those average Benningtonians who are online at the kitchen cupboard, because they don't have enough food to get them through the week or, or the month. So, it is, it's a spectrum. But I think what holds us together is, is the commitment to the town, being here and, and taking part.
Okay. Thank you. And that concludes the question portion of tonight's candidate forum. We now invite each candidate to leave us with a closing statement. Mr. Bethel, you're up first.
Well, thank you, Mr. Ebert. Very well. Trying to call me. I have to interrupt you here a bit. But your, your, your forum was very well done. I liked all the candidates' answers, most of them. I just think it's time for new thoughts on the board. I hope people will look at this show that you've drawn, and they'll vote the way I want to vote, which is the new, and people that want aggression to happen in Benning, Northside Drive, National Control, open-mindedness to the people. Those are the candidates I hope they'll consider. And I thank you very much, Putney, and Cat TV, and WBTN. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Brady?
Um, my name is Peter Brady. I grew up in this town. I raised my kids in this town. I've served this town in the past. I've served two terms in the Vermont House of Representatives. I was elected clerk of the General Housing Military Affairs Committee while I was there. In my last term, I had three pieces of legislation signed into law by Governor Howard Dean. I have served as BSD and MAU moderator in the past. I was elected to the Board of Civil Authority, and was Justice of the Peace. I was vice, elected Vice President of the Bennington County AFL-CIO at a time when this town had a lot of unionization and a much better standard of living. I am running because this little town, nestled in these beautiful green mountains, means the world to me. I think we're at a crossroads, and we've got to decide which way we're going to go. I think I, I have a proven record that you can look at. I could get things done. I want to increase the grand list through development. Johnson Controls, Northside Drive, Main Street, art centers, entertainment centers, a youth center, in conjunction with the, the restaurants and the galleries that are already there. We need a thriving retail section over on Northside Drive, changing Johnson Controls and moving forward. We need to set some goals and benchmarks for the BBC and Economic Development Director that this town has. I ask you to give me a chance to do that, and let me show you what I could do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brush?
Um, I want to thank you, WBTN and Cat TV, for inviting us all to participate in this forum tonight. I just want to encourage everyone to go out and vote. There's no reason not to. If you can't get to the polls, you can call Tim Corcoran at 442-1043. He will send you an absentee ballot. You can stop in at the Bennington Town Office anytime between now and Election Day and vote. And the polls are open on March 5th from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM at the Firehouse, and in the, at the North Bennington Firehouse, I believe, also. So, I just encourage everyone to go out and vote, whether you vote for me or not, just, you need to vote. And thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Jacobs?
Again, thank you to WBTN and Cat TV. It's a real community resource that we've got the benefit of this evening. And this panel, I appreciate it, being up here with, with these fine folks. You know, this all gets to, to the point of, you know, this is a kind of fun thing to do, and I encourage anyone, next year, there's going to be another election, get involved in the community. At, at this point, you know, I'd like to see more women involved on this board, in addition to Sharon Sett, you know. But, you know, this is not a male-oriented board, for whatever reason, I don't know. But I, I came to Bennington about forty years ago. I love the town. My family loves the town. My children grew up here, and unfortunately, moved away, but thankfully, not so far that we can't visit with them. I would love to have an economic base that would invite them back. That's something that's yet to be in the cards. But I hope the, I have the opportunity to serve on the board in the, in the near future, in And I do, as Sharon does and we all do, encourage everyone to get out and vote, because all of this excitement and this enjoyment is not worth much without the participation of the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McFadden?
I'd like to thank everybody that's helped put this together and make this possible for all of us to get the word out. I think that's one of the most important things, is letting people know who they're voting for, where their ideals lie, and who will ultimately be right for them. To backtrack slightly, I think that we all went around the circle, and we all agreed that when you talk about a Benningtonian, you talk about a diverse individual, or a diverse group of individuals. And I think that when you start to talk about a select board, you have to look at a group of people that represents Bennington. And you're gonna want something that is also diverse. So when you, it stems conversations, it develops debates in some cases, but you end up getting the right outcomes. And so when you look across the board, I think it's good to have differing opinions, because you can accomplish a lot more with that. I know when I talk to people, they see me as young, enthusiastic, somewhat very ambitious in some cases and optimistic. But I think that I can bring more to the board than just the young aspect of things. As I've mentioned before, the different things that I'd really like to look at are community development and communication throughout Bennington and the different programs that we have, whether it be the school board or the BBC. I think communication is huge, and it'll help the select board make the right decisions and push Bennington forward. And when it comes to community development, I do mean bringing in new businesses. Again, talking about looking at Northside Drive, changing different lands from industrial to commercial. You can develop a new community that people want to live in, and you'll see the industries that we currently have begin to have employees that make good salaries start to live in Bennington and put their money into Bennington. And you can kind of kill two birds with one stone that way. So when you're looking at voting for me, or possibly voting for me, think building a community, which will impact industry as well, as well as opening lines of communication across the board, whether or not you think that our sole role is just looking at a budget, it is not. I think we need to open up those lines.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Putney?
Again, thank you to WBTN and Cat TV for making this possible. I'm here because I love Bennington. I chose to live in Bennington a long time ago. For the past thirty years, I have been a consultant in not-for-profit organizations, town governments, state agencies, and a wealth of other not-for-profit organizations in Vermont, in the Northeast, and around the country. And in that role, have helped those organizations do planning, to take a look at a wealth of opportunities, a wealth of issues. I've done job development grants. I have done infrastructure grants. I even worked on railroad once, oddly enough. I've worked on college grants. So I understand the power of planning and the way it can help bring in resources. Not to suggest that I would write grants for the town, because we have staff who do that and should be doing it. I wanna note that Bennington is a town that's benefited from private investment all over the place, and we need to make that feasible and practical for folks. Some of that has been in the not-for-profit world. I've been president of Old Castle Theater Company for the past two years, and have been heavily involved in bringing Bennington Town, Town's only theater, online. But we have a lot of other not-for-profits, college, four colleges in this town, more than any other town in state. I think ultimately, the real asset Bennington has is its people and what they bring to the table, their intelligence and their commitment. And I would like to work with them to bring impact in the town.
Thank you. Mr. Rowley?
Yeah. First off, I also would like to thank WBTN, Cat TV, and to thank my fellow candidates for a lively evening. Ten years ago, I moved to the town of Bennington by choice. And it's sad sometimes to see that, as a taxpayer for the town, in the town of Bennington, our taxes keep increasing, and our services, whether in the town or in schools, are always on the decline. I've volunteered, I currently volunteer as a mentor. I volunteer as a guardian ad litem in our court system. I've sat on the BSD and on the DRB, on the Development Review Board. And I guess, as a guardian ad litem, I have a unique perspective on the population of the town. I've seen our residents in their high points and their low points. So I guess it's, we need to, we need new blood on the select board to work on ways of bringing young families and new businesses to help our community grow. So feel free, if, now that you've connected a face to a name, if you see me around town, if you see me at Crazy Russian Girls, or you see me at Price Chopper, or Ramontos, feel free, tap me on the shoulder. If you have any questions, ask. But I'd hope you give me the opportunity to, and the privilege, to serve the people of Bennington.
All right. Thank you very much. Well, that's going to wrap up this special edition of News and Views tonight, our candidate forum. I certainly want to thank all of the candidates, not only for being here with us tonight, but also for their willingness, not only to run for office, but to serve in office. It is truly difficult and thankless work, and I believe everyone here is to be commended for their commitment to our community. On behalf of WBTN, I wanna thank Cat TV for their wonderful collaboration in tonight's event. Also, thank our producer, Tracy Barrett, for wrangling everything and getting everything put together. Everyone here encourages everyone in Bennington to get out and vote on March 5th. Good night, and have a pleasant tomorrow.